We're on.
All right. Okay, this is the Village of Peatone Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 23rd of 2015. Would the clerk please call attendance?
Mr. Reichert.
Here.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that all trustees are present. We have a forum. We may officially conduct business, first order of which is a review of the January 26th, 2014 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve them as submitted, or if you see a reason to correct it, please let us know that correction. What a pity.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Forsythe.
Second.
Second by trustee Reichert, to approve the January 26th, 2014 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes as submitted. Clerk, please call the whole.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Present. Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Okay, public comment time. Gentlemen, we're going to be talking about some things later. You might want to participate in that. The discussion of senior services available in the area. We had, we were unable to make contact with Mrs. Baderman to get feedback. We have tried several times to invite her to this meeting. So, topic discussion-wise, do we want to talk about it today?
I gotta get there.
The door's still open?
Yeah.
No problem.
I thought I could feel some.
Yeah, we had to pull the threshold out because it heaved.
The darn weather.
Yeah.
I can share, I'll just briefly share some of the things that I have spoken to her about. There is senior transit, one of the questions was senior transit. There is senior transit available. If you're in Peatone Township, you would call Joliet. If you're in, pardon me, Will Township, you would, you would call Washington Township. It's kind of split up between service areas. But it's basically the same, the same format that Mrs. Baderman was discussing, the information she'd brought in earlier, and it's pretty much the same format we always had with PACE when, when East Will County Senior Services were operating a few years ago. So that, that service is available.
Trustees, I also placed in your packet some information relative to the Senior Services Center out of Joliet, and the various programs that they offer. I think part of our, our discussion with Mrs. Baderman was possible coordination with this outfit, if they don't already do that, and looking for ways to coordinate services. We also, the Senior Services Center included a letter addressed to me and to you requesting a financial contribution. Historically, we have not contributed to various sources for the main reason of, once we start with one group, it will open the door for many other groups, and that's the historic perspective. Personally, I will be making a donation to the group, and I invite any of you to, who might want to write checks, to do so if you so desire, and I will include them all from us to help support that effort. I do know that the folks out of the Joliet Community Senior Center that are offering it to all of Will County have had some issues with state distributions, and they receive their money from the Illinois Department of Aging, to Northeastern Illinois Area Agency on Aging, and United Way, plus voluntary contribution, and they've had some cash flow issues that a friend of mine who works with them from time to time has noted to me, so that's part of the background of it. I have a question. Sure. On our, on our budget for our 2014-15 budget under Administration Department, we have community relations. Would that not be part of community relations?
Typically, the village has not, in order for us to contribute to a charity, we have to find a, the village board has to determine if there's a public good into it, and in the past, I believe the board has refrained from donating to charities in and of themselves. To my recollection, that's been past practice. In the past, we would handle it as much the way we are now, and that is making private contributions, sometimes in the name of the village, but making private contributions.
So the answer is no.
It's something we can discuss with the attorney.
Because I see that we've had it here, we've had it back in 2014, and if we're not using it, why is it there? And if we want to limit it, I know we have several organizations in town, maybe put a limit to it, so we can help it out. I mean, if it's sitting there and doing anything, nothing, I mean, it's, let's try to help somebody out with it. If not, I'm more than willing also to write a check also for, to help out with that also with the. Box from the other board member.
What was the line I am talking, discussing?
01504463. It's under our code, it's under the Administration.
Oh, okay.
It's in the budget. It's actually, it's actually in the budget books and.
That's typically used for public relations and things like that.
Because it actually says "community" relations. So wouldn't that be community, I mean, technically?
Well, one example is we used it for the expo.
The business expo.
That was one of the relations, that was my instances we used it for, was for the business expo.
Publicize that and to do other costs. Maybe we should rephrase this or do something or look into this a little further about maybe helping out other organizations in town. A decision of the board. So, it's just for future, in future discussion, future item.
I mean, according to this, we have 187 people in the Village of Peatone that have used this.
Not in the Village of Peatone. It's in.
In their service area.
In, I would say it's in the zip code of Peatone. It's also the township that's. Yeah. Because they do. But still. That would be the easiest way for them to account, by using mailing address. And the total fee that they're asking for is $500. Is that correct? Total donation. Yes, so.
One of the problems we get into that, with that, Roy, though, is that if we begin to contribute to some entities but not others, all of a sudden, issues and questions will start to arise as to why we picked one and not the other, and are we now playing favorites to one organization over another? So we need to be mindful of that. Doesn't mean we, we can't do that, but we have to be mindful.
This is why maybe we should set a limit, because if we have this money that's sitting here, maybe we should have a limit to it. And once it's done, it's done. Sure. I just don't think that we could help out organizations in the area.
I don't think we have enough information here to make a decision one way or the other. I think we should table it, but it's something that we definitely should keep looking into.
I agree.
As far as our level of contribution or involvement.
Okay.
Could there be a question from the public?
Sure.
How much is in the budget under that line?
$3,000. Okay, the sense I get then is that at this point in time, the board wishes to further investigate, and then talk about possible policies related to such amounts in donations in the future. So we will take that under advisement. In the meantime, I would suggest that the trustees give it as much thought as possible, and then come prepared to offer additional directions and thoughts on it. One of the things we'll have to do is explore it with the attorney to see if there are issues that perhaps are not on the immediate surface that we need to explore.
And one of those issues that I can think of is whether or not we can contribute to entities that aren't based out of the village.
Good point.
And/or to whether an entity not based out of the village but provides services to those within the village, whether that would be acceptable, or whether or not that's a requirement. Simply the 604-68 area code may or may not be enough of a determining factor to determine whether or not it's legal for us to even be involved.
Okay. Other items to add to that? Hearing that, I'm going to move on to the next order of discussion, which is snow removal in the downtown sidewalks.
We've done some additional research. While we've not conducted, we use a class of surveys, we'd agree that most of the sidewalks are in the public right-of-way in the downtown, depending upon what you define as downtown. There are some that kind of are set back more than others, but I, it's, I think it's safe to say that most of them are in the, in the public right-of-way. We've researched some other communities, five or six other communities. Some of them do the sidewalks downtown, some of them do not. It's kind of mixed. You get into questions of, when you talk to the folks that do, you get into questions of geography, define the exact area that you're going to be doing. You get into scope of service, what do you do, when do you do it, and how often? What's the trigger? Is it a two-inch snowfall, a four-inch snowfall? One community only does it if it's almost a blizzard. So they do do it on occasion, but it's pretty rare. Others do it on a regular basis, and again, some others don't do it at all. So, you know, as you're, if you're thinking about doing this, you need to define a scope, what's the geographic area, draw lines on a map, this is where we do it. You need to find what triggers it. You need to define what you're going to do when the trigger is reached. Are you going to shovel the sidewalks once, clear the sidewalks, I guess is the better way to say it? Are you going to clear and salt? Are you going to come back and clear it if it snows another inch six hours later? Are you going to continue, are you going to salt? I mean, these are the questions, as we talk to people who do this, the actual public works directors, these are the questions that come up, and those are the things they've considered. And there's a variety, some places, you know, they do it, do it once, and that's it. Others put a lot of manpower into it, a lot of resources, and they'll go back a couple times, and they will salt. And I suspect the impact on our liability exposure is a function of the scope of work. How much do we do? And I contacted, last time we discussed this, I contacted our insurance company, it was basically, you know, we need to know what you're planning on doing before we can tell you how much it would impact our insurance. Obviously, it's not going to double our insurance, I don't want to exaggerate anything, but it is something we'd be looking at. So that's, you know, that's what we found out, talking to five or six other communities. It's kind of a mixed bank. Some do, some don't, but it's a function of what is the geographic area, because one of the universal things we heard is, you know, they do it for me, and I'm, they do it for those folks over there, and I'm half a block away, or I'm a business six blocks away, but they're doing it for those businesses. So, I mean, those comments, those are real, real old comments that they have. And what's the level of service again? I don't mean to repeat myself, but how much are you going to do, and what are you going to do, and how often are you going to do it? And, you know, those are, those are the conversations we have with people who actually do the What's the level of expectation of service?
So what does the, what are the feelings of the board about, you know, getting into this area, and how far do we go?
Have there been any conversations with public works about it?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the general idea from them?
Well, I mean, yes, it can be done, but it's going to cost more, and, and some of this goes back to your level of service. I mean, when we plow, we have every public works employee, including water and sewer departments, behind a snow plow, plowing. And so, you know, we, we plow the streets for public health and safety, then it would have to come to that. Super Bowl Sunday, when we had the 14 inches of snow overnight, Mr. Henke was down with the snow pusher downtown, you know, at the intersection of Second and Main, for 15, 16 hours, just nothing, doing nothing but pushing snow while the streets were clear, and piling it up over here. And then he spent another day clearing up a little bit, and then they spent either one or two days, I think I put it in there, one or two days, nothing but two dump trucks, I think it was one day, two dump trucks and a, and a loader doing nothing but hauling the snow out from the downtown area down to the fairgrounds. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that's done there just to keep the roads open as much as they can. So it's, it's a function of what the, can they do it? Yes. I mean, we might want to explore, depending upon the level of service, hiring someone, you know, not as a part-time basis particularly, but a, but a service. It depends on how fast you want the service done.
A contract type of thing is what you're alluding to?
I'm just saying, that's one option to consider. I'm not recommending it particularly. I'm saying, if you're going to, if you're, if you're thinking about doing this, look at all the options available. If we do it, we're going to need some equipment. We can't do it timely with what we have. We're going to need some additional equipment for our John Deere lawn tractor, either a blower or a broom. We've talked to people who prefer both, you know, one or the other, so we'd have to do some more research there.
Can we get some information on equipment, Ray? You have about 30 grand, you said?
He quoted me, yeah, 30 to mid-30s for municipal price. That was the John Deere, the 1585, which, if we're going to look at equipment, I think that's the route we really need to look, because it was a multi-purpose tool. Like I said, you can get the sweeper, the snow blower, the mower, everything. I think we could trade in one of our zero terms for it. But I just, if it's our property, I think somehow we're going to have to try to help, but it's, it's the rest of it that's going to be the issue, when and where.
Well, I think something should be done, especially at Issa, the funeral home, the snow's still on the sidewalk, and like Steve Frost mentioned a couple weeks ago, you know, something should be done. I don't know, it's up to, like, Second Street, I think that's pretty well cleared off, but East Main Street, it's terrible. It should be cleared.
And being the public right-of-way, there's no recourse for the landowners, or the landlords per se, as far as putting responsibility on them?
Some cities do that, but I can say that you would not have my support for that. I can tell the board that.
It's, you also get to the enforcement issue in terms of what if I don't?
Well, if we're going to look at equipment, I'd like to look at a breakdown to cost, if we are able to trade something in versus a service, what their rough estimate would be. I mean, obviously, they're not going to give us hard numbers, because they don't know what the snowfall per year, what the frequency of how often we're going to do it. At least get a rough idea based on 2013, 2014 snowfalls, what they would come in at.
Okay, that raises the question of, is it the consensus of this board that they wish to pursue this in terms of getting the data to determine costs of removal? Were we to do it, what equipment involved, and so on? If we were to hire it out, what that cost might be? Are we also, we're also looking at the parameters under which this would be, this would take place. In other words, would it have to be a snowfall of a X number of inches? And as was brought up before, what if it snows again? How often do you go out and do it? And I think all of those need to be part of the policies that might come out of this. So, having said that, is that the consensus of the board to investigate the costs? Okay. So we'll get costs relative to those items. The next item is the potential, how often is this done, or under what circumstances is this done? Limits. Limits. I think the total, the bottom line here is just going to be the cost. I, I agree with, it seems like everyone else that we should do something, but I just think it's going to be at what cost. Also, I mean, it's, the liability is a concern also. So, I mean, it's just, you just have to have more information.
When you research, you're going to research the part of the cost, what the insurance is about.
Okay, so we're researching equipment, contracting out, costs. Because what do we hit the streets at? Two inches on the streets, correct? I mean, when we put the plows out, is it two inches? Okay, so, and if the snow plows, they got to go out at 10 o'clock in the morning, and if it snows again 10 o'clock at night, if it's two inches, they got to go out again, correct? You know, see where I'm going with this? So they would have to go back out again.
It's a judgment call as to the safety factor. Is this one of those where it'll take care of itself?
And also your businesses. I mean, you have some businesses that open up at 6:00 AM, most of them at 8:00 AM. So they, you know, there's a time constraint here that they have to be done by a certain time, because otherwise, you're going to have cars parked on the street out here, and where are you going to put the snow? Which I agree, should be the brush thrower type thing, because if you're going to use a plow with the sidewalk being the way it is, it's never, every time you blow the snow out in the street, you're going to need that plow there to take it away. So you got to have that timeframe, too.
I mean, it is a, it is a two-person project. It is, it's a two pieces of equipment project, because to, to clean the sidewalk, you know, ideally, you blow it out into the street, but then you've got to plow or push it, and collect it, literally, when you do that. So that's, that, that's another component of, of the project, and there is a timeline involved, because, because as trustee Hupkey said, we have some businesses that open at 6:00, and some businesses that close at 1:00 or 2:00 AM. So, you know, if you want to get something when you're, when you're sure there's nothing downtown, that's like a five or six-hour window. Every other time, you may have customers parked along the streets.
You got to remember, our streets take priority, too. I mean, you can't be putting a sidewalk as a priority over a main, main street.
Well, I mean, that goes into when, you know, what do you do, when do you do it, and it's all level of service.
And then you also, like you were saying, we need to determine point A and point B.
Judge, I know last year, we budgeted for two part-time guys for the summer. What if it, or is it possible, what if we didn't hire one for the summer and then one seasonal for the winter? Because like Chris said, the streets got to take priority, so, and I get, because I do it, I, I get where, like, if, if Bob is out for 15, 16 hours, him and the guys, the last thing you want to do is go shovel some sidewalks. And you can't make it snow just between these hours. So what if we don't try to work in the budget for a part-time guy just for December to March?
And that's where that, that cost compared to a service might come in handy, too. You know, what the part-time employee would cost versus a service.
We would still, I'm just talking out loud here, thinking out loud. It would, we would still have to have the component of having someone there to plow it. You know, if we're using, if we're using.
Isn't one of the guys downtown normally anyways with the box scraper?
After a certain period of time, yeah. I mean, originally, we've got five people out doing a five-area, circuit area, which some of it, which incorporates downtown. But when you get to, you know, a little bit, when they, when they get to a, to a good point, it's my understanding that that's when they bring in the snow pusher and, and try to hit the downtown, you know, what we consider the historic downtown area.
It may not be ideal, but is it possible to simply clear a path, and instead of pushing the snow into the street, push it to the curb side of the sidewalk?
Then how do people walk over that?
Well, we'd have to create some sort of pathway, you know, at, at intervals, so it might help answer the question of people parking cars and other obstacles.
Those of us that do shovel, you know, that's what we typically do. I mean, you've got to push it to the street, and then I go through, you know, I mean, I, and I know other people do also to try to create, but then you, you'll get that freezing aspect, and it really becomes, and then more, like I said, once it's in the street, you know, they'll come through and take it away. You know, it's just a matter of getting it to the street, and I understand it's not going to get to the, get, either get away right away, you know, depending on the timing of the snow, but, yeah.
It's not the best solution?
Right, exactly. I mean, it would be, the ideal solution would be that it would snow at, you know, time A, they would get it into the street at 3:00 in the morning, and it would be all gone, you know, by the time everybody comes downtown, but I know that's not going to happen.
Well, ideal situation, but you have glycol system.
The what?
Glycol system.
It just melts off?
Yeah.
Just the sidewalk.
But that's, I mean, that's the problem with the downtown area itself. There's no place to go with the snow.
Well, it's zero, zero line, that's.
Yeah, I mean.
There's no place to put the snow.
That's, that's, that's the problem.
And the other problem is the empty buildings. I mean, if you had businesses in there, they'd be motivated to shovel their own sidewalks. I mean, and do we continue this after, if and when we ever do have businesses in these buildings?
There is nothing, there's nothing on the books now that would make them. The people who are doing it now are doing it for their customers. There's nothing on the books now that would require that they do it. So.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you had a business in there, they're going to do it, because they want their customers to be able to get to their building. But ideally, it's, should be their responsibility if they're in there.
It's an argument that easily goes in circles.
Right.
But then it gets to the point of what does, what does this body that represents the community and acts on behalf of the community, what does its body decide is in the best interest of the community? The other question, too, are we going to be responsible to add some type of an abrasive, like a, a sand or a salt, to, to keep things from, you know, being slippery, being icing up? Are we going to be required to do that also, or, because now you have another cost that's in there, too. You know, the salt may be, salt may be cheaper, instead of you got a half-inch of snow, it's not going to stick.
To me, to me, the main concern is, you know, getting the snow off the sidewalks into the street and away from the street. I mean, I think from that point on, you know, I don't think the village should be responsible for salting, or, you know, I mean, it's just, that's my concern, and I think the concern of a lot of people I talk to is just the snow issue, you know, getting it out of the downtown area.
Just making it where you can get around.
Right, where you can, where people can walk down the sidewalks, or get out of their car and walk up to the sidewalk, and not be walking down the middle of the street.
On that, I, I disagree. I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it all the way, because if we do shovel or plow, you're opening yourselves up to ice issues, and we need to take up care of all of it, because it's going to go from not being able to walk through the snow to having issues with slipping and falling. So.
And I mean, just to show you how, how many parameters there are to this, we salt, it thaws, it freezes again, we go back and salt again, it thaws, freezes again, we go back and salt again. I mean, that's part of the scope of service I'm talking about. At what point in time are we finished as a, as a village?
We should talk to the village attorney and the insurance company, but I understand from a liability perspective that if we're operating in our ordinary course as a village, which this would be part of our ordinary course, I mean, we're relatively shielded from liability unless it's some sort of gross negligence, which is possible, but I don't think failure to salt would rise to that level. So, you know, perhaps providing the path and calling it a day would be sufficient, and it would help address that concern about how often do we return? Well, once we've, once we've met our, met our obligation to remove the snow, that's, that's the end of it. At least in terms of salting and abrasives and things of that nature.
Okay. More? More on this topic? All right, we got our research cut out for us. And part of it, I think, includes looking at the communities that do do it, what are their policies related to it, as a guideline for discussion points. So we will request from them copies of their guidelines. And God willing, the worst of the snowfall is over this year, I hope. So as this goes on, we should have everything in place within a reasonable amount of time, but not if another storm comes through next week. All right, anything further in this topic? Okay. We go down our agenda, general discussion on other topics.
Hate to bring it up, but how about the railroad crossing out here? Have you heard anything back from?
Have you heard anything from the railroad regarding repairing that crossing?
No, I can, I'd have to check, I haven't, I haven't heard anything extra.
I know, Bill, you contacted them some time ago. Do you have any reading back from them?
I talked to them about the condition of the rail, and about the condition of the crossing as you go over it because of the roughness, and I have not gotten any other replies from them on that.
I think part of what we're looking at too is dictated by weather and making any kind of repair that wouldn't complicate the issue.
Yeah, I don't see them doing any repair of the crossing as far as the road until spring because of, you know, they just don't repair those type of asphalt or anything until spring. I'll continually call, it's an 800 number hotline you call, and get an update, but I haven't heard a response back.
Okay. Other questions?
Last committee of the whole meeting, I inquired about the Buckston Group, and I said, I think both of you had informed us that you had a conference call.
We're, got a series of conference calls coming up. We had one that was very brief, and the short version of that is that they have, they do a revised study, and they're looking at specific drive times related to specific retail businesses that might be longer than the 12-minute drive time that we looked at before, and thus increase the area. And we're talking about some other issues too that I don't wanna talk about at this time because we're still in the talking stages with them, but, yeah, it's, we've got another one coming up this, is it this week?
I don't recall, I didn't think it was like that soon.
I, it's a couple of weeks, I think, from the last one, so let me do a quick check and I'll see. Okay. Oops, it's March 10. We're gonna follow up to that where, I wouldn't write the note down. We're supposed to have some of these details along with another group of potential retailers that might fit the parameters and contact information. Other questions?
I'd like to bring up one thing that I was gonna discuss at the regular meeting, but let's do it now. I just kinda wanna raise the awareness, if you will. It seems as though it's often overlooked, or at least given short shrift, but I've done some more looking and looking back at old notes as far as the police pension fund is concerned.
Yep.
And I would encourage the board and everyone here that's listening to give some serious thought to our police pension. I don't know if Chief has anything to say on that, but one of the things I noted that, I mean, the way that we're underfunded is extremely concerning to me. And an example that I've come up with just based on the packets I had available to me is that as we sit here today at the end of January, that's the last report we had, we're $14,000 down from what we were in September. So what I'm getting at is, it's a fund that we're supposed to be providing into, putting money into, and it's supposed to be growing so that it's there for future use. We're actually losing ground on this, on a month-by-month basis it appears, and so I'm, I wanna give some, some caution, if you will, to everyone to give it more attention if and when the time comes, because I'm concerned that we're, we're on a slippery slope and we're gonna become more and more underfunded on this thing. And I know that when Mr. Rock was here to provide his report, we hear the report, we thank him for his time, and we, it seems as though we kinda move on quickly, but I'd like to caution everyone to, to give a lot of thought to this, because I think we are one or two on-duty accidents from a major catastrophe. So I'm just asking everyone to give it a serious consideration.
Do we recall what the big number, the underfunded amount we were, that he presented to us? Not the $14,000.
Well, there were two, I don't recall the specific numbers, but there were two measurements of, of where you need to be 15 or 20 years from now, and the number you need to be contributing, they recommend you contribute each year, so, and both of those are underfunded, though we've tried to contribute, we've tried to increase the amount that we're funding each year.
But although we've been increasing the funding, we're still falling behind in terms of what we're funded for, and that's what's given me the greatest concern.
And part of that has to do with the fact that we had several retirements in the last year.
Right. My fear is just a catastrophic injury that might destroy the entire system that we have right now, in terms of our savings.
And this is, this is a tough decision that not only this community, but every community across the state faces in the Downstate Pension Fund. Ours is kind of, has been impacted by the fact that all of our police officers at one point were IMRF, and when they switched from IMRF, their contributions went into our pension fund, but everything that the village had contributed on their behalf to IMRF stayed on IMRF and did not come back with it. So that's part of the reason why there's a big gap there. And one of the issues that is faced by communities around the state, and we talk about this when we get together and you hear it, this is, this is one place where, no matter what the size of the community, from as small as a community of a couple thousand on up to communities of millions, they all face a similar issue, and some who also have fire pensions in addition to police pensions, it's accelerated even more. And the issue that we have to come up with is, when these pension funds were set up, they were based upon planned financial returns of about seven or eight percent. And the most recent commercial I saw on TV was for a money market for the whole 1% annual a year. And the, you know, to David Rock and the Pension Committee's credit, they have actively sought to, to use the proper, not risk funds, but the proper funding mechanisms to move the money to different locations where we can get a better return on it. The ultimate situation that we face as a community is, if we want to do this, we are going to, if we wanted to get caught up, we need to have a plan that basically doesn't clobber everybody with huge tax increases over a short period of time in order to bring that fund up. The funding that we, we do to date is based upon actuaries actually going through and recommending a dollar amount to us to keep it fluid, and we contribute that each year from our funding, our regular funding, and add a little bit more to it. But as I've said before, this past year, we've had a couple of people go into the fund who had not been there and kind of at an earlier age than we anticipated them going into it. And so it's coming out faster than it had been prior to this. But getting back to your point though, it's, it's a problem that's not easily solved, and we have to look at some ways to do it.
Sure, and I just wanna give everyone the heads up, just look closely at those numbers on a monthly basis, hopefully they start to go up and not continue to go down.
Bill, do you recall if we, Chief Moore, do you recall if we had any, like, one-time expenses with, that might have come through between last September and this, and now, I'm thinking we had to get some disability costs, and I don't know when we'd pay our actuary and those kinds of things?
February disability.
There was a back due disability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But even still, this, this particular report, we have a $9,000 revenue and an $18,000 expenditure. That's concerning, because you can only do that so often before.
I, I totally understand. I just wanted to see if, if there was some one-time things that.
In 2014, we had a claim on the pension fund for a, not work-related disability, but a claim by a participant who had not met the 20-year mark, and then when you have the medical evaluations, that you have to send them to three different doctors. The pension fund has to absorb that cost, and it does kind of go into the, the cost factor, and then we have all the possibility, we had to have a formal hearing on the disability, and so you have other costs associated with that, so the pension fund took the blunt of that in addition to awarding a disability. That was not, not in the planned environment, but you bring up a good point, but the village does meet the actuary cost, and David Rock gives a update. They have diversified some of their investments, and one of the investments actually paid this year 11%, and the treasurer for the village didn't know how to react because we, now that was this year, it's not the continuation of the, the fund that every year, but she didn't know how to act when that one fund that we're part of gave us 11% return based on how they managed the money. So we, that was a, something we hadn't seen in a while. But the village does meet the obligations, and the actuary that's hired by the pension board, there was a cost factor included him in the last, since last report you've seen, that some bills came due, and his bill kinda got lost in the shuffle, and that was, see what's, he charges $1,500 for this cost and that, but it's important to understand that the pension board does not get big returns on the money they have, and it's, and the actuary and Mr. Rock do report to the board, and Mr. Rock does bring up some points, and the more, you know, additional money is gonna be needed, and you don't want to fall behind on the actuary recommendation and Mr. Rock's of what may be needed, because the percentages, you have a mandate after a certain period of time to be at a certain level. And we are still a young fund, but we do have some mandates that we'll come to do someday.
And I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, George, that in Mr. Rock's reports, he generally makes a recommendation of a, of a range of excess contribution to make, and I'm pretty sure that we consistently make the minimum excess contribution. So again, I'm just cautioning everyone to please consider going forward that we are walking on a very, very thin, thin rope.
Most pension funds are in the same predicament.
Right, but I don't wanna be the losing end of it.
Well, yeah, yeah. And I, I think what, what we can do is, we can present the board with potential ways to fund, additional funding for this, for their review, and make a determination at that point in time whether or not the board decides it's in the best interest of the community to do this now. The other, the other thing you need to keep in mind is, the rules that are set on this pension fund are set by the people in Springfield who have absolutely no skin in the game. And that's one of the reasons why it's difficult to get reforms to various local pension funds and the like. So, but yeah, not an easy problem. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If the board has about five minutes, I can save them about five minutes of the actual board meeting.
I think unfortunately because the, it is on the agenda for that meeting, the police, the chief's annual report, if that's what you're heading towards.
Yeah, that's kind of.
No, because it's an agenda on the next meeting that starts at 7:00, it wouldn't be proper for us to do that now.
Just tell the board, I will tell the board that my report will be brief as quick as I can, I know you only got one or two items on the agenda.
Okay. And this is a heads up for the board?
Well, this is part that didn't come in your package, so.
Oh, okay.
A mission by me.
So we will, we will keep this for the report coming up at 10 minutes. All right, trustees, I got about another 10 minutes or so before the next meeting would start. Is there any other topic that you wish to bring up at this point in time? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to adjoint the, to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Trustee Huffkey, second by Trustee Forsen to adjourn the February 23, 2015 committee of the whole meeting. Clerk, please, panel of.
Mr. Huffkey.
Yes.
And Mr. Forsen.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
And Mr. Reck.
Okay, motion carries, and the committee of the whole meeting is adjourned.